Okay, I am welcome everyone to the July 16th, 2024 meeting of the Davenport Library Board of Trustees. My name is Tom Engelmann. I currently serve as Vice President of the Board, have been for a number of years. We've gone through introduction and roll call of everyone. I want to thank the new members who are joining us. We always look forward to new perspectives as we move through this process of providing a valuable service to the community. And we'll just kind of move into the agenda. My goal is to always try to get these meetings done in a reasonable period of time. I'm still working a bit. I haven't totally retired yet. And so I want to try to make sure we respect people's time as we move through this. First item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. And for those of you who are not familiar, basically Consent Agenda is just items that are routine, and we just approve it in one fell swoop. You know, if there is something that needs to be discussed, we generally put that lower on the agenda where we actually discuss the items. So the first agenda item is Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Still moved.
I said we moved.
Moved and seconded. Okay. So roll call. Malavika?
Peasant.
Bob?
So I'm sorry. What is my role here?
Yes. Yes, no?
Yes, no. And can I just back up just a little bit? You said Consent Agenda, and I'm not really sure what that consists of. What is that?
Well, you can see that there are, we approved the agenda.
Okay.
We have the minutes, and we have the very, the financial report, which basically is, you should have gotten that prepared. Everything on here, you should have got.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry, I should have moved on. So yes. So Joe?
Yes.
Laura? And then we'll call for your, Mike?
Yes.
Honey? And Jerry?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. That passes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting, I'm new to this. Okay, so then we have public comment. I don't see anyone. So we will move on to the next item, which is reports of communication. Friends? Do we have a report from Friends?
Yeah, just quickly, this is Hillary. We've got two new board members as of this month. We're really excited to have them. They both have nonprofit experience, whether that be as an employee at a nonprofit or a board member. And we had another visitor this month who is a prospective member, hopefully joining us in August. Additionally, our executive committee, our leadership team, is getting together next week just to kind of discuss some strategy and other things to kind of reengage the board. And we're excited about this, the second quarter of 2024.
Thank you. Committee reports. Since I was the Chair of the Finance Committee, we'll have to figure out that out as we go forward. If you look at the budget report, there was a budget report that shows for the whole of the year, which is apparently there are still some expenses the city has to pick up and accrue into that. But I think we more or less have most of it there. If you look at it, the recapture is for 100% of the year. Our total city appropriation were about at 92%, which indicates we're running right on, right where we should be. Personnel? Amanda?
Yeah, nothing to report this month from the Personnel Committee.
Okay, thank you. Advocacy, Malavika?
Nothing to report, but just to share with you all the wonderful course that we had on our social media, the Aunt Flo course that we had on our social media. The beauty of it was I had reshared that on my social media platforms that got shared by friends in Wyoming to the Park County School Board. They are putting and thanking us, Davenport Public, for sharing that and giving us the idea. And so the Cooley School District will have those Aunt Flo because of us reshared. And the T C Public Library, which is a part of the Park County Library System in Wyoming, they will be having the same. And so I said, I thanked them. I said, do you mind sharing pictures with us after you put them up? We would sincerely appreciate it. We thank you for thanking us and, you know, letting us know. So thank you, Lexi, for bringing that on board. That was absolutely fabulous. That is one. And the second one I just wanted to share, got such rave reviews, the stuff that we are doing about, you know, having books. For example, the latest list of various books on emotions for children that was, that were showcased, you know. I kind of took that, and there is, again, there's a group of, the ALA group, which is called the ALA Think Tank Group. It's not directly affiliated to American Library Association, but there are librarians and people who are associated with libraries in various capacities in that group. So they're from all over the world. So this was like, I think, the fourth time, or the fifth time, our library had done something just absolutely marvelous, where one of the teachers, one of the, just before I came, I saw how many had come and liked and said things about it. There were around 274 people who were talking about it. That was at 11:30 before I left. But one of the teachers who was, who appreciated especially those emotion books, she said, go guys down there to Davenport Public Library and talk to them how they do it. And she was from New Zealand. So, so thank you. Lovely efforts by all. This is just fantastic. So thank you very much. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Malavika. And the next item is work trip report.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. The first thing is I want to draw your attention to the new board packets that Casey created for everyone.
And the NC folders.
These are really nice. We really prefer to have the folders back at the end of the meeting if possible so we can get it prepared for you for next time. And you're welcome to take any contents with you or leave them. If you leave them, we'll just recycle them. So just to head up on that. Thank you for Casey for doing that. In terms of my report, just a couple of things to highlight. Number one is our library social worker, Quinn O'Brien, is now a licensed LISW and LCSW, which is a really great accomplishment, and we will celebrate that fact, which is really cool. In terms of material services and programs, our Touch a Truck event was insane. We had almost 1,000 people attend, and it was really, really well done. So our teams that worked on that did a fantastic job. We're thankful for that. We did partner with the American Red Cross last week, Thursday and Friday, for a blood drive that they had, a Heinz and Paws blood drive. And it was the largest blood drive that they have had in the Quad Cities ever for the Red Cross. So that was really, really great. And they had nothing but positive things to share about the library and our facilities and how many individuals showed up. There were only about 20 people registered, but close to 40 actually came in and donated blood there. So it was a real good partnership throughout the Quad Cities with a bunch of other humane societies as well, too. And that, those are the only things I had to highlight. Happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns.
I'll make a comment. Our family attended the Touch a Truck, and we actually, I have another family that lives at Vettendorf. And they were very impressed, not only with the Touch a Truck event, but they went inside and saw the new children's installation at Fairmont. And we're like, wow, this library is amazing. And we're collaborators, not competitors, but it was, it's nice to see the reach of our facilities and our staff. So great job.
I want to say I really appreciate the library stories.
Yeah.
And I have to ask, Lexi, what is true chats?
Thank you, Joe.
I had to look it up because I was like, I don't know if that sounds positive. But I did. And like, it evolved from some kind of like a cool, preppy person meaning to being a little bit more general. And it's cool and doing a good job. So like, yeah, yes.
To spin off of the old Trixie and chat, right?
Sure, sure. Like really though, like my age people thing.
Good, thank you.
I would like to make a quick comment. I have an opportunity to work with her on a regular basis. And so that's so good to hear that she's continuing to do great things. Since she's been here, I conduct an outreach meeting on the first and third Friday for all the social services agencies come together. She's just been such a dynamic part of that. And then someone allowed her to go on vacation for a whole month. I mean, that's your client. Well deserved.
Yeah, technically, that's, that's my fault. Request above 10 working days. She's phenomenal.
Anything else? Good. Okay. Next item on the agenda is council liaison. Barry isn't not here. I know the city, normally the summer, the city council is a little slower, but you know, I'm sure she would make her points if she were here. So moving on to new business. The first item of the new business is election officers. Joe?
So Tom, just a couple of things for context for this. I want to make sure that everybody understands what they might be getting themselves into. From the bylaws, the officers of the Board are the President, Vice President, and Secretary. And the President shall preside at all meetings and perform such other duties prescribed by law for which usually pertain to the office. The President shall be the public spokesperson for the full Board. The Vice President shall perform the duties of the President in their absence. And the Secretary shall be responsible for keeping records of all proceedings of the Board and other clerical work. And just a note on that one, it's really kind of more neat than anything else. And then there are also committees. So the President, Vice President, Secretary form the Executive Committee of the Board of Trustees. There's nine members, obviously, and three of those form the Executive Committee. And their duties are to general supervision of all officers and the other committees, and they exercise the executive powers as may from time to time be assigned to them. Also, the immediate past President, which is Steve Hemi, shall serve as an ex officio non-voting member of the Executive Committee. And he expressed he plans upon attending meetings in the future. He wasn't able to attend today's meeting. The full Executive Committee may act on emergency matters prior to a regularly scheduled meeting or when an assembly of the full Board is impractical. But any action taken by that Executive Committee has to be approved by a majority vote at the next regularly scheduled meeting. The other thing is the standing committees, which are the Advocacy, Finance, and Personnel. Advocacy works for the betterment of library services in the community by advocating for funding, communicating with stakeholders and community organizations, and promoting library services to community members. The Finance Committee advises the Board on all financial matters. And then the Personnel Committee shall make recommendations to the Board regarding the evaluation of the Library Director and other matters dealing with personnel. So those are essentially the positions and the committees for the Board of Trustees.
And just to, for the adaptation of the new members, Executive Committee, having served in that, on that position for a number of years, we occasionally have that and approve things. But we've always brought it forward to the whole Board at the next meeting, whatever decision we might have made on that emergency basis. So it has happened, not very frequently, I guess, is my point. It's not like we do all the time. So at least we haven't. You know, and so anyway, so I guess we will start with nominations for officers. Do we have any nominations for President?
Tom, I'd like to nominate you for President.
Thank you. Is there any other nominations?
Joe, Tom, I did Joe's sentiments. I would put forward you.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Malavika.
I will second that nomination.
I, I thank you. Can I say anything? Sure. I so appreciate both of you for the confidence. I sincerely appreciate. And I know this is not a reason to give, but I, unfortunately, I cannot give the time that it, I mean, do not take me wrong, everybody's busy, but I have to leave after the meeting at 1:00 on God for certain reasons. And I cannot give the time which I would really like to give and work for. So I so apologize that I cannot serve that way, even though I would have wished to serve. I'm sorry, but I appreciate the confidence. Thank you.
We appreciate your honesty.
Any other nominations?
Are you willing to serve?
Pardon?
Are you willing to serve?
Well, yes, I am. Okay. So I guess we'll call the roll. Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Laura?
So do we need, are we voting on you right now? Or do we need to make a motion?
Well, there was a motion.
Okay, so the nomination is the motion. Okay. Then I'm great, voting yes. Sorry. Just wanted to make sure we hit it right. My apologies.
No problem. Mike?
Yes.
Honey? Jerry?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Because my vote is yes, so okay. Now, because, okay. Now we have, we have the vote for Vice President. Are there any nominations for that position? Honey? Would you like to do it? Laura?
I'm going to be less graceful than Malavika in my decline and say that I'm very happy to serve the role of trustee right now, but with my other board commitments, my career commitments, my family commitments, just a trustee member is the level of commitment I can make right now.
Anyone else would like to serve?
I'd like to recommend my friend Joe here.
With the understanding that it doesn't automatically mean that I become president? I'll be saying, Tom. The ministry.
Yeah, the other thing, I don't know if we made clear, it's a two-year commitment. It's for, the election is for two years. The exception is for the committees, that's just for one year. That's an annual thing. There's no expectation to move on to the President.
We don't, we don't have, Steve was President, we're, not yet. It's not like every two years it goes up. Are any other nominations, Vice President? Any other nominations?
Just checking with Amanda or Michael, see if they want to throw their hat in the rain.
Um, I think I'm okay.
Okay, all right. So we'll go, go through my roll call on that. Joe? Laura?
An enthusiastic yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Myself is yes. Okay. Bob?
Bob.
Sorry, Bob. I should have noticed that. Okay, all right. So and then the last position is Secretary. Is there any nominations for the position of Secretary? As it's been noted, that position is sort of.
I'll send the numbers to whoever.
Well.
I do that.
Yeah. The, the, the Secretary's position has basically in the past mostly functioned as part of the Executive Committee. And so when we've had the rare meetings of the Executive Committee, that's just part of that. And I know Malavika has on occasion attended that meeting too, so.
So, I mean, I'm hearing you say that Malavika could take the speakerhead role.
Still have her title.
I wouldn't mind.
Is there any, would you be willing to serve?
I, I wouldn't mind. And, and that's for that reason with, so I wouldn't mind.
Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Anyone else want to?
It's real easy. Sorry, just. Really, yes.
Okay, so Malavika has been nominated, and it says she'd be willing to serve. We'll have a roll call on that. Joe?
Yes.
Was there a second on that one?
I will second.
Laura?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Malavika?
Yes.
Myself. Really having a brain fart. So, okay, so Malavika will be the Secretary. And then we also have committee assignments. I don't know if we necessarily have to do that today.
So what it states is that the committee shall be appointed annually by the President at the regular meeting in July or as soon as, after as possible. So we could have a discussion on who would be willing to serve on which of those three committees, and then you can make that appointment.
I mean, that would be my preference. You know, if there are people who have a particular type committee they would like to serve on, you know, now that you kind of have awareness of what those particular assignments might be, you might have some awareness of the type of it involved. You could think about that maybe at the next meeting. We could then come forward and make those appointments. I mean, that would be my preference.
Not really present.
But so, so I, I think that's the way we'll proceed with that. Okay. And then the next order under new business is.
Yes, sir. So we should, we now, the next meeting, tell you what approach you'd do.
Well, think, think about it. You can communicate that at the next meeting, or if you want to communicate it before, that would be fine. But, you know, I know Joe has been on the finance before, and Amanda's been on personnel, and Malavika's been advocacy. But, you know, that doesn't mean you necessarily have to stay where you were.
And, and may I say something?
Yes.
And I just, I just, I also would like to know. I would also like to share that if anybody is interested, it did not be me who is the company chair. I'd be more than happy to be a part of something and someone wants to take over. So I just wanted to make that clear as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I am currently on personnel, and I'm in a bit of a thing at work because I'm on the Finance Committee at Leaver. So I cannot be on Finance Committee here since looking, I'm going to have to step away from that. So no finance for me is kind of how we're interpreting rules.
I'll continue with finance. But so again, we'll make those appointments at the next meeting. So everyone can think about where they might want to serve. Next order of business is a motion awarding contract for security services to Citadel Security USA to exceed $60,000.
So there is a memo in your packet that gives you a little bit of information on this content for context. Following your decision in May to extend the policy restricting employees from carrying firearms to include security contractors, we reached an agreement with Primark Security by temporary security services at Main Library through August 17. We then collaborated with City Finance to release an RFP for long-term security services. And we received a number of bids. There were six actual bidders that we received for the process. And the library administration vices awarded security services contract to Citadel Security. Funding for those expenses included in our annual operating budget and is covered within professional services agreement.
I'd love to make this motion. I can't believe that was only May.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's only been two months since May.
I, I found it interesting that the gentleman was so adamant about his employees wanting to work. That's his choice. So, okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Laura.
I stick in the motion.
I'll take the second. Any further discussion?
What was the name of the previous contract? Global Security Services?
They didn't want to continue because they were, got to, or managed.
Essentially?
Is this a single-year contract or is this like a multi-year commitment?
This was one year. Yeah, one year, two years. Just kind of curious, was there a reason why they felt they needed to have it done? Ultimately, to try to distill briefly, I think there was miscommunication when they, when they applied for and received the bid in the first place. And they were the expectation that they were going to provide armed security, and we never asked for armed security. So they started in January 2023, and we have four security officers from them up until March of this year. They were all unarmed. But then that security officer was suddenly started carrying a firearm in March and didn't notify us about it. And that's what started things at that point. So I think it's essentially miscommunication. They were planning on providing armed security, and we had never requested armed security.
So there was never like an incident in the library where they felt the need to do so?
Just. Not to my knowledge.
But there were people who were uncomfortable with it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the contract. I'll call the roll. Over here. Mike?
Yes.
Honey?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Amanda? Joe?
Yes.
Bob? And, you know, did you say anybody?
Oh, yeah. Yes. That's.
And myself is a yes, and that passes. And then the next item is review, review of administrative policy, Section 1 employment practices, and Section 3 employee conduct. employment practices, and section three, employee conduct. And for those of you who are new to the board, as part of our accreditation, we have to periodically review all policies and occasionally make amendments, adjustments as we move forward. Jeff?
Yep, so Tom, thanks. There is a memo in your board packet that gives a little bit more information about it as well. As you know, as the governing body for the library, the trustees are responsible for establishing all policy. And then the library director, working with my team, would then oversee the implementation of approved policy and provide direction to staff, usually through procedures and guidelines, best practices, that sort of thing. The library operates under three types of policies. Those are board policy, administrative policy, and then city administrative policy. Board policy and administrative policy are two distinct sets of policies that govern different aspects of the organization. Board policy is basically public policy. It kind of impacts the public for the most part. There are 18 policies within board policy. Those are all available on our website. Administrative policy primarily concerns employees and covers kind of employment-related issues, such as paid time off, working expectations, stuff like that. And there are 39 policies under administrative policy. So, those are categorized into six categories: employment practices, performance expectations, employee conduct, benefits, leave, hiring, and miscellaneous. Then, in addition to all of that, is city administrative policy, which applies to all employees at the city, including those employed at the library who also receive city benefits. So, if the trustees have not addressed a specific issue in one of the policy that you have approved, then generally the city administrative policy is then applicable. That policy is available online as well, and you're encouraged to look at that because of what Tom had mentioned for our accreditation. So, public library standards, they dictate that we have four approved policies, which are circulation, collection development, personnel, and internet use. And then all the written policies have to be reviewed at least once every three years and reviewed and updated as necessary. So, right now, the administrative policy is under review because our current accreditation cycle is going to be up by the end of March 2025. So, in order to streamline the process for this review and not overwhelm all of you and us as well, we decided to break it down so that you're not looking at 39 policies all at once. So, what we're going to do is proposing that we look at sections one and three this month, then two in August, four in September, and then the final two sections in October. And then in November, there'll be an opportunity for the trustees to approve all of the administrative policies at the same time. So, leadership team and the idea team also are reviewing any policy for any recommended changes. Idea team had noted one item which we addressed, and you can disregard that if it's a memo. And then one final note is that we did change both board policy and administrative policy recently with like a template, so it aligns with our current rating guidelines. So, I think I said policy or policies 31 times in the memo and/or out loud. It's a lot, but it's fun stuff. It's good stuff.
Good question. Just because, you know, I can be a pretty linear thinker. Are we doing sections one and three because of the volume of policies in those two, and then we're going to change?
That's a great question, yes. Volume is what we were looking at.
Are we doing, are we going to approve those today? Are we... Because traditionally, we have discussed them on one meeting and then maybe approve them on the next meeting.
And that's kind of what we're going to do with this one too, but we're going to discuss, 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 discuss each of those four and then approve all of at once. That's what we're proposing. Slightly different for these just because there's so many of them.
Okay. So, I guess we will then discuss... When we start with, I'll see one...
Yeah, one, two, one, yeah.
If you want to go through any recommended changes, Jeff?
You'll see, as you look at each one, any changes are indicated in red or with a red strike through. A lot of them are just in line to make sure they're in accordance with current practice and in some cases with union contract. And a lot of them are really just for review. There's not a lot of substantive changes in here proposed, but obviously some for consideration.
Sorry, any discussion on board?
I have a question. On the substitute page on the second page. A banding, what is that?
That is the pay scale that they aligns with like the raises and increases for the scale that the city provides for this position.
So, substitutes would automatically be part of that as well?
Yeah, they have their own separate...
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a typo or something. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So, we're changing pronouns. We're changing pronouns.
In general?
Yeah.
That's one of, that's one of the changes, limiting him for his, to just say theirs.
Any other discussion?
Just a question on that. I understand why you're doing that. Appreciate that, and I was talking earlier about this. Contemporary usage is not allowing to say, to use a singular pronouns. And I had been finding it hard to do it, but I think we need to be consistent all the way through because the document, even within the single paragraph, the ship between singular plural pronouns. And I guess just from a grammatical perspective, I'd like this to be consistent all the way through. Now, I had started putting this all together, and then our power went off last night. You have to keep it school, right? I didn't buy a sign. But, I mean, there isn't, I didn't see typographical errors. I just saw consistency usage. And I'm happy to go through with my suggestions if you are ready. Good on this one, probably is going to be different for me because I don't have software that allows me to adjust PDFs. I can't go in and change this. And when I cut the pace out of the PDF, I lose all of your changes. I have only different context. So, if it's okay, I'm going to go through and make some suggestions.
Sure.
And I'll just drop it off, and you guys can come up with it. None of my changes changed the content. It's just a matter of maintaining consistency of usage.
And if you'd like, we can share the word versions with you as well, if you find that easier.
Then I can do it right in it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get those to you.
Yeah, and I guess we'll have power back by tomorrow or 7:00.
Yes, yes.
I'll put that tomorrow.
I will read it.
Michael, thank you for expressing that so articulately, much better than I do. My questioning is always, I want to be as inclusive as possible. I have no issue with adding the non-binary or the gender-neutral pronouns. Just the grammar, the grammatical appropriateness of it is the part that I get hung up on. I don't know because I don't work in this world. I work in a world of numbers. Is it, would it be reasonable or possible to consider, instead of replacing his and her with their, having it be his, her, there? And so then we have all three, or am I making it out of a mold up here? Someone, okay, faces are telling me to stop. Just it's painful, it doesn't fit. Okay. Like, is this, is this standard now?
I would say it's pretty best practice at this point to just use.
It is, okay.
Five years from now, we'll see. Look at the beginning.
Okay.
What's happening in academic circles, there has been, and this is not new. This is not like within the last 10 years, just been around over decades, how we use that third person when we have singular pronouns. And I can remember, like my students repeated, like, no, 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 they've got to be parallel. You've got to use the same voice all the way through. And now, if you look at both APA and MLA, which are principal ones, they're both saying, no, they is fine. Because, and now, it's because of the non-binary stuff going on, and they is that very convenient. And it's the same now we have with you. We don't make a distinction there. You can be singular, you can be plural, right? Although I guess if you're on topic, it's yous, but...
No, it's y'all.
Y'all. It's the south.
That's my statement. Plays off as y'all.
But now, stepping on anybody's toes, I'm getting it.
And plural is all y'all.
Correct.
And I'll have coke with that.
Yes.
But, beverage, yes.
What kind of coke would you like?
So, what I'll need, and I guess you can share it if you want, but it'll just be some suggestions always just to square. Right, and, yeah, everything I'm suggesting does not change substantively the content we have in it. I mean, everything else seems unimportant. So...
Thank you, Michael. Thank you. Very special means staff to help our work.
I'd just like to mention that I like this, I like the standardization that we have done now with the employer, which we used to have before. We have the library, so the branding part as well, and the consistency, so that's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other discussion? So, if you want to move to, I guess, 1.2? Are you willing to...
I kind of did both, yeah.
Oh, okay, should we cover it?
Unless there's anything else someone needs on 1.2.
Cover another sec, uh, call for one? I'm through, I guess it's one, five. Again, we will be, we will be holding on, I'll vote on this in November, so you've got time to look at this and think about it for a while. I guess we move on to, I guess, the policy three, which is conduct. I guess, Jeff, did you want to say anything about this?
So, again, just the standard changes that we discussed. And 3.1 in particular, a couple of just reformatting and rephrasing so that it all falls in the same kind of pattern. So, like, for example, under two, we didn't need to say is prohibited because it states that these are prohibited lists, so it's kind of redundant to have that in there.
It's a question on 3.3, the complaint procedure under provisions. Will the first presenter complain to their immediate supervisor unless the complaint is regarding their immediate supervisor? Does the rest of the policy outline what they are to do if it is regarding their immediate supervisor?
Yes.
Should they know what to do? People?
If it's, is it out there immediate supervisor, does it go into who they then go to?
Any other?
So, am I to infer that you're asking, do you go above supervisors?
Yeah, well, what path do you take? You know, if I work for Tracy and I have a problem with Tracy, who do I take? It's just notorious that it does. You take it to nobody.
Any other discussion? Go over it, Mike.
No, no, I'm just, I'd like to do an answer here. I think that should be...
Yeah, we can add that in, so I think we can sum it up.
I just have a quick question, and I know sometimes to simplify things and not to sound too redundant. And I see where you removed the word cellphone because it says the use of personal devices. But I sometimes think that sometimes things need to be specific. And I think because cellphones is such a big thing, I'm wondering why you want to remove the word cellphone.
That was meant to address all types of devices, so tablets and smartwatches or anything else. So, it's meant to just be more all-encompassing, not just limiting to just the cellphones. That's a question that's come up periodically, is what can I do with my other device?
I'm trying to do everything without spelling everything out.
Any other questions or comments? Well, again, as Jeff stated, we will be voting on this in November. So, I think generally, really, what staff does is they take our comments and they sometimes work them back into our revised version of this, which we will have before we vote in November. So, you know, as we move forward, we will do this on subsequent policies and do this in one big batch in November. Okay. You have any comments, Amanda?
Nope, not in addition to what we were just discussing. Thanks though.
Okay. All right. So, move on to the next item on the agenda, which is president's comments. I don't really have any that I just got here, so... Sometimes there will be something there. The next item is board training. Oh, I did want to point out to the members of the board, if you look on your, the information that staff provided, we periodically meet at the branches. So, you'll see, for example, in September, we're scheduled to meet at the eastern branch. And then usually in March, we meet at Fairmont. Otherwise, we meet here. And so, just so you're aware, that sometimes we meet at a different location.
Sometimes we forget having a race.
And, and under board training, we've got board work, trustees work hard, and board training is good.
So, Tom, this is a continuation from some of what the board worked on in the fall to prepare for the transitionary period where we were going to have three trustees stepping off and three new trustees coming on. And one of the things that the board did at that time was go through what we refer to as board work to try to identify some strengths and some weaknesses and to see if we could identify where we might be able to get some really good trustees in as candidates and then hopefully sway the mayor to go with our, with our best selections. And so, here we are today now with a great, great core group now of trustees and an opportunity to go through a little bit more of that board work. So, I had shared with you... So I had shared with you what we refer to as the trustee scorecard. And then I also have a list of who and topics and who will present to the board coming up as well. And that's not in your packet, that's just something that I have. The scorecard is really meant as a self-assessment for a trustee to, for you to use to see if there's areas that you might want to approve in or not, where you feel you're confident in, in terms of how you are serving as a trustee for the library. And then it also does help, at least from an administrative perspective, we can identify some of the areas where you think you might need some extra work, or maybe we need to focus on some of those topics on some of these other areas as well. So I don't know how you want to approach it with a trustee scorecard. I don't know if anybody's comfortable sharing their scores if they did complete it. Essentially, it's set up for 20 kind of points, and each point is worth five, so it'd equal 100. So if anybody did score themselves and get above 90, that would be phenomenal. Unlikely that anybody's that amazing, but I think all of you are that amazing, so I don't know how that would work.
I've done this.
100 credits, there you go. I think your credit is.
Yeah, I'd say I think it would be because of 112.
But this could tell us that there are areas that you might want us to do more training on. So that's the scorecard. And then the topics coming up right now, what we have tentatively scheduled, because we do have new trustees, we want to make sure that we're getting our department heads to you as soon as possible. So actually, next month, Tracey's going to start out with development and fundraising, and then we're going to start getting into the department heads. So we'll have customer services, information services, technical services, youth services, our community outreach services, special collections facility, IT, then into summer reading, marketing, collection development, office facilities, HR, our social work, patron experience team, and programming. And that runs us all the way through the end of 2025. So that's the tentative slate for how we want to approach training and opportunities for that.
Yeah, typically, as Jeff was saying, we'll have a presentation to us as part of our meeting of either like a department at the library or something was going on that we need to be aware of that would educate us as board as to what exactly is going on. So, yeah, I'm hopeful that that will be beneficial to all of us. Those of us who've been around a while, it will renew our memory. For new folks, you can pick up, you know, and some people have already are aware of a lot of that, but it's always good to see, you know, what's new. So I guess with that.
Can I make a suggestion? Someday, can we all, now that it's nice spring and summer going on, can we have a photo? We used to have a photo of the board at the start of the, so is it possible that next time? I mean, we could fix it.
Sure.
Just throwing it out.
Sure, sure.
We could have a group photo.
We could do a group photo if you wanted. Would you like, guys like to do it maybe at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. That way we have a photographic record of this term's board.
Do I get to do it today? Amanda, are you coming next week?
I don't know. I hope to be in next month. I'll be very long.
You can take your picture like I did last week. And you have a lot bigger.
Okay, so we will do a group picture at the next meeting. Everyone is physically available. Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry. Started the.
I wish it was good stuff. We do it every month.
With the following year?
Yes. We finally catch everybody, see who's absent.
Are you just saying that?
No, I, all right, helping down a table, rocking it, I think.
I'm just saying, I don't think that we often have 100% participation.
Yeah, I'm fine with you guys taking it today and just photoshopping me. I said I'm fine with you guys taking it and photoshopping me, just pretend.
Are you in PJs, or can you flip your camera on real quick? I don't want to put you on the spot, I just did, so never mind.
I'm trying, it's not going.
Yeah, we saw you earlier, yeah.
That's what we did last year.
Yeah, we did it the last time.
All right, which screen?
This one was easier.
Get my clothes out of it.
I made a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
On the paper.
Second.